I would like to call to order a special meeting of the Avalon City Council to discuss vehicle and parking. And if we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protam Cassidy.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for people in the public to address us on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. Looks as though we're all here for the same reason today. Okay, there's nothing on the consent and now we're gonna leap into general business.
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank the council and members of the audience that have taken the time to come here today for this study session. I do anticipate this is the beginning of many study sessions, not just for parking, but vehicle, traffic, and everything that has to do with any kind of transportation in our community. I do not anticipate that there's gonna be a readily easy fix for today, that this is a starting point for us, and that some direction that whatever the council decides out of this study session, that you provide to the staff, and we will come back after we can analyze it, come back with a thoughtful layout of how we can enroll it. I do not want to jump into some decision today without us first thinking it through. And most importantly, whatever you determine, say if you told us to change some signs or change the color of a curb, I have to make sure that there is proper enforcement, that we can enforce it, because you know of once any law that we make, if we don't enforce it, there's no sense having it. And we do have two code enforcements that are full-time, however, there's only two days a week that there are two on. Usually it's just one person. So we have a PowerPoint presentation just on some statistical information that we're gonna be providing you. And then the very last part of it is just some of the bullet points of some of the ideas that council has suggested to me in my office. And Bob Greenlaw, I also can report to us on the SCAG grant monies that we have for a transportation study, and we're waiting to hear back from them, but I'll let him give you some more information on that. And we'll start off with our PowerPoint presentation, which Devon Hart is gonna give to us. I tasked her with updating us on some of this information, so she's very familiar with it, and I thought she'd be a good starting point.
And Devon, before you get started, I wanna make sure that all of you can hear, because I seem to get complaints that whether you're watching it at home or you're sitting in the audience, you can't hear us. So if ever you can't hear us, raise your hand, and if I can see you, we'll tell the guy to crank it up. Okay, thanks Devon.
Okay, good morning, everyone. So this is just, as Neese mentioned, an introduction to some statistical information that we updated from the 2015 traffic, the last time you guys had a traffic, a vehicle and parking study session. First, on the dais, I wanna mention that I put three documents. You guys all have a copy of the presentation, as well as a copy of all the statistical backup that we used to put the presentation together with a little green postie on it, as well as a list of all the different types of vehicle permits that are out there in the city of Avalon. There's something like 20 different types of permits that we issue. So this first slide is just a real general overview of the vehicle permits that are issued every year. This gives you a comparison from 1990, 2000, 2010, 2015, and 2019. It shows you all the different types of vehicle permits issued compared to the number of residential dwelling units on the island compared to up top our census population numbers. For today's presentation, we're really gonna focus on just residential vehicles. So that's your green and your blue portions of this graph. There's two types of residential permits. There's an autoet permit, which encompasses both microcars and golf carts, porters. And then there's also a full-size vehicle permit, or your blue sticker vehicles. Just as a quick overview, each dwelling unit is permitted an autoet. And as you know, full-size vehicles are permitted by existing stickers, or stickers are issued on a two-for-one basis. So two vehicles leave, and we get one vehicle back. Let me know if I'm going fast, 'cause I feel like I might be fast right now. So in terms of residential vehicles, you can see that blue bar. Overall, the number of vehicles has, full-size vehicles has reduced significantly. In 1990, we had 628 full-size vehicles. Today, we have about 407 full-size vehicles. In contrast, the number of autoets residentially have increased from 827 in 1990 to 1,591 today. If you look at the top line, that shows you the number of dwelling units. So even though there's a combined total of 1,900 vehicles on the island, residential vehicles, the community could reasonably grow to 2,392 vehicles to match the number of dwelling units. That would just be the autoet vehicles. It's important to note that people with the dwelling unit vehicle and autoet may, in addition, have a full-size vehicle permit. So when looking at overall capacity in Avalon, there's two ways to really determine capacity. One of them's, one way is by looking at the number of dwelling units. So as I mentioned, each dwelling unit is allowed one autoet permit. So for example, Clemente, right now, is at 76 percent capacity. There's 111 dwelling units, and there's 72 autoet and 12 full-size permits for residents on that street. So that's one way to talk about capacity. The other way to talk about capacity is the actual physical capacity of the neighborhood. Clemente has only 558 linear feet of available parking space, which is really only enough space for between 30 and 41 autoets. As I mentioned, there's 72 autoets, 12 full-size vehicles. Of those autoets, you have 37 that have on-street parking, 35 that have off-street parking, and then, as I mentioned, the 12 full-size vehicles. So in that way of defining capacity, Clemente's only already at 172 percent. So this is a look at some of the most congested streets in Avalon in terms of dwelling unit capacity. So we looked at the streets and the flats, and then we also looked at Metropole, Whitley, and Marilla. And you can see, in terms of dwelling unit capacity, almost none of the communities, or none of the neighborhoods in the flats, have reached their dwelling unit capacity. However, some of our streets in the hills, Whitley and Marilla, have exceeded their dwelling unit capacity. And that's for the reason that I mentioned earlier, that some residents can have both an autoet and a full-size vehicle, but for the purpose of counting residential vehicles, we're counting them the same. And then on the next slide, you can see the physical street parking capacity by street. So the orange line that you see on the bottom, that's when a vehicle is the minimum size that a golf cart is, about 102 inches. The blue line is when a vehicle is the largest golf cart size, that's 138 inches. So we averaged those two sizes to come up with a vehicle capacity count for an average number of parking spaces available on each street, and then compared it to the number of parking, or excuse me, the number of vehicles registered to that street. So in that context, you already see Clemente, which I talked about earlier, which exceeds the capacity, the physical, its physical capacity. In addition, Metropole and Whitley also exceed their physical capacity. One of Clemente's kind of saving graces, though, is the large number of off-street vehicles that park the off-street autoets at Bahia Vista that park there. But even accounting for the Bahia Vista units not being on the street, the number of autoets registered to the neighborhood still exceeds its physical capacity. Does that make sense? So significantly, too, Catalina Avenue is only at 27 percent capacity, the number of vehicles registered to that street, versus the amount of available parking space. And recently, Catalina Avenue was painted that green curb to limit parking on that street for non-residents of that street for that one-hour basis. It's just that of note. So at this time, the city does not have a policy to address parking convenience, but we do have a policy to address the necessity for people to be able to park close to their homes when they have physical limits, and that's the Blue Curb program that the city council approved in October 2018. Since they, since you guys established that protocol to review a resident request for a blue curb, the city's been able to install nine blue curbs throughout the city of Avalon. As Neese mentioned, these are some of the ideas that have been presented to city staff from members of city council and a few other members of the community. We'll just go through them real quick, and then after I get down, you guys can talk more in depth about any aspect. But one of them is to have a more strict 72-hour parking limit in all the neighborhoods. Another is the street sweeper revision to the rule that we have for our street sweeper. So instead of having that block of time, usually four hours, that you cannot park on a certain side of the road for the street sweeper to sweep the street, the policy would change to whenever the street sweeper passes through the area, then a resident may move their vehicle to that side of the street. It creates a little bit of a congestion issue, though, when we talk about like the top of Whitley and our emergency vehicles having to pass through when there's vehicles that could be parked on both sides of the street. Another idea is have no overnight parking in some of our resident areas unless by permit. Remove the green curb on Catalina. Enforce off-street parking, so if you have an off-street parking permit and you're parked on the street during a certain period of time, you could be ticketed. Install paid parking meters. Allow parking along the K-Rail at Lover's Cove, and that would, in essence, provide parking for folks going over town for the day, so they wouldn't be parked down in the flats, maybe they'd park over by Lover's. Reduce the number of vehicles out in the population in general. And then the last is to develop a thoughtful traffic study to more thoroughly analyze all this data. And that's all I have.
I have a couple more things to add. So the Vons survey that we did, when we changed all the colors of the curbs on Beacon, Sumner, and Catalina, that's through the end of August, and then Bob will be coming back and reporting out on that survey results. I have Code in the audience, and they're only here till about 10:30, 10:45, so if we have any questions, because of the funeral service today, they'll be required over at the church. And Bob Greenlaw has to leave by 11 o'clock, too, so if we have questions for him. Dudley is at the front counter, he's the only one out there today, so if we have specific questions about the vehicle code, we'll call him in. And I would like Bob to come up right now and just talk about the SCAG grant, just so you have that in your back pocket.
Thank you.
Okay, as we previously reported, we are going for several different grants to get a master transportation plan for the city, and we were successful in receiving a grant from SCAG that allows us to do that. Where we're at in that process, SCAG is, it sounds like they're actually gonna put an RFP out to get potential consultants, and will provide us that consultant. So I would think that within the next three, four months, we'll be hearing from them when that would kick off. So what that plan would do for us, it would look at not only the parking, but, you know, all our modes of transportation, so, and some of the improvements. And what the intent of that is, is to help us put together, you know, better capital improvements, but also to, if we've gotta change some of our parking, that would dig into those details. Okay? So that's when we'll be really studying it.
So we'd find out in three or four months, and then the process after.
Then the process starts, and it's, it could be nine months to a year by the time, but you'll have a solid plan that builds suggested capital projects off of that, too.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, Bob.
Mayor, I think because of the big number of residents we have in the audience today, that I think that their interest is really on the parking in the heavily congested area of Descanso. It used to be Catalina, and now it's Descanso, and also Clarissa. We do acknowledge that all of the streets, not every one that we covered in our PowerPoint presentation, there are certain areas that are also impacted, that it's just not strictly downtown. But there are people that go to work and park all day, the visitors or residents that park, say, on Descanso or Catalina, well, not Catalina anymore, Clarissa, to go to the beach with their children and all their ice chests and umbrellas, so I think that that might be the best part for us to start discussing those areas first.
Okay. And do we have, we have given parking permits for people that live?
On Catalina, Beacon, Sumner.
Okay. And everybody who wants one got one. And that, that seems to be working for those of you who got those permits?
Yes.
Okay. How many of you got permits that are sitting here? Oh, okay. And how, and on Lower Descanso, no permits?
No.
Oh, we're not doing them there yet. That's right, that's our problem. So we got Catalina, and, and nobody's here for Sumner.
So the way those permits work is you're a resident, you came in, and it's, right now, it's a temporary, just like our temporary permits. It could be matured to a sticker, another decal, but, so in that one hour, or whatever that, instead of being in that 72-hour zone, now it's more restrictive, it's one hour, it could be wherever, and it allows Code to look at that sticker and say, you know, you get a, you get to still park in here for more than an hour. So that's, that's how that's worked. I think there's about, approximately 10 issued in the three streets there.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
So Mayor, if we had, if we painted, 'cause I really suggest any moves we make is to use the color of, on our curbs versus putting up signs on our narrow sidewalks and stuff, just to see how that flows. If we did say Descanso at a certain color, then the residents could have their temporary sticker to try it out, to see if that prevents the people from parking all day. It's, it's, it is like a water balloon, though, as Amanda said to me today. If we squeeze at one end, it's gonna come out another end, so we need to...
That's a visual.
We need to, that's why I wanna be able to come back and see what the ramifications is it gonna be.
Right.
And say, we said it's only for two hours on Descanso, yes, that would prevent the overnight people, it would prevent people from parking there all day to go to their job. However, after two hours, I wanna make sure I can enforce that, or I don't want upset residents calling me after three hours saying Code hasn't been there. I mean, we can only do so much. So we want to be able to really enforce it, so we can alleviate their problems.
Right. And I don't know which is the low-hanging fruit.
I don't know either.
But one of the easy ones is the off-street parking. If you have off-street parking, you have to use your off-street parking, and we've discussed that before. So that might have a little impact. If people have off-street parking, they have to use off-street parking.
On Descanso, though, Mayor, there...
Nobody has any?
The curb cuts on Descanso, there's only eight.
Well, that's a start. But then when you get to, I mean, it would carry over to Whitley and Marilla and all those other streets, 'cause that would be citywide.
Specific to Descanso, there's eight curb cuts, but of the 82 vehicles that are registered on Descanso Street, 15 of them have off-street parking.
Oh.
At least that's how they're registered.
So that would impact that nicely, if they had to use off-street parking, right?
They're cars. They're not parks, they're cars. They don't have off-street.
That's specifically autoets. 15 autoets is how they're registered.
Now, mind you...
Wait, okay, wait, hold on.
Mind you that we're giving you information of what's in our database, of who's registered. Now, if I really live on Clemente, but I've registered it to Descanso, you know, until that comes out as misinformation, we can only do, we can only provide you, council, with what we have in our database.
Right.
So if somebody's not telling the truth, I, I can only control that once we get reported, and then a letter's issued to them, and they have to come prove their residency.
Okay.
Because, as you know, everybody, not a great, people will work around the system.
Yes.
The other, no.
Excuse me, if you're, and I'd love to hear from you, yeah, to the mic, thanks.
The other problem is that those of us on Descanso, I've had it happen many times, cars, or golf carts, block the, what do you call them?
Driveways.
Driveways. So you can't put your car in, because golf carts or cars are blocking it. You call the sheriff, and they can ticket, but they can't tow it away, so therefore, you still can't get into your driveway. So if you're gonna say we have to park in our driveways, there has to be some way that we can be assured that we can pull it in there. Does that make sense?
I, I'm hearing you loud and clear.
I mean, I called, and they've ticketed, but they can't tow.
Right.
And so you still can't get it in there and off the street.
That's a problem, we do not have a tow yard.
Well, let me ask you a question, if you happen to know that. And if you don't mind introducing yourself.
Oh, I'm Debbie Tarpley.
Okay.
On Descanso, Lower Descanso.
Yeah. So the people that are blocking you, do you feel they are, who do you think those people are? Those, those people that are parked there for 72 hours, and once they park there for 72?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. They can be people that are parked for 72 hours, and you can't move them.
Right.
And they're, and you know, and there can be people that just don't realize that the driveway is there, you know, and they just, because parking's limited, so they'll take what they can get.
Right.
And so they squeeze in, and, you know, then we can't get our golf cart in. So if you want me to make sure I can park it in there, I need to be able to get in there.
Right, okay.
You know? But, yeah, there's, so those parking spots aren't necessarily available, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, right. I'd like to think that, I mean, yeah, to handle that, even on the mainland, that stuff happens, you know, so, but I mean, as much as we can tackle it, would be good to tackle. Debbie, right?
Is it time for someone to get up and speak?
Sure.
Before I speak, I'd like to pass some things out to you. This is a petition that the residents on Lower Descanso have signed, and I'm gonna go over what we're asking for.
Sure.
The... Why don't I hand these out for you? There's several, you'll see when you get to the hotel page. You'll see from the top page, I've kind of condensed it for you, typed up a list, so you don't have to, so you don't have to look through the entire petition, so you can see who signed it, where they live, how long they've lived there, how long they've owned the home, and if they're full-time renters. First of all, we'd like to thank the city council for scheduling this meeting to hear the parking concerns from the homeowners and full-time residents on Lower Descanso. This is what we, the homeowners and full-time tenants on Lower Descanso, deal with on a daily basis. In the off-season, we have trouble parking on our street due to the following reasons. One, people who park in town, I mean, people who work in town and park on our street leave their cars and carts parked eight hours while they're at work, many of whom live close by. And let me give you an example. I'm on the boat one day, and I'm talking to someone who has a house on Lower Descanso, and the guy next to him says, "Oh, I know exactly what you're talking about. We live two blocks from you, and my wife parks in front of your house every day to go to work." Two, people who go to the mainland for a day, for a couple of days and up to a week, park on our street. We have even found a few people who leave their golf carts and cars for days while on the mainland, and have a friend or family member move their golf cart or their car back and forth across the street for them to avoid parking enforcement restrictions and street sweeping. They do this for the convenience of driving their car into Lower Descanso to have their golf carts and cars waiting there for them when they return. If they are going to be gone 24 hours or more, they should be taking a taxi, dial-a-ride, or walk, but they don't. They continually violate the city's 72-hour ordinance because the city allows them to. Three, we recognize that Yamaha does not have a lot of park, sorry, we recognize that Yamaha does not have a lot to park carts on that they are working on. However, Yamaha and their customers often park carts that need to be walked on, worked on, on Lower Descanso all day. Perhaps there needs to be discussion on how Yamaha can service golf carts, their customers, without taking up valuable street parking. Four, people who can't park on Catalina Street and Clarissa Street on their street sweeping days, park on Lower Descanso. All of this creates a situation where it's difficult for us to be able to park on our street in the winter. Now you add the summer season with all the extra carts in town, Hamilton Cove renters, residents on the hill, and their guests, and the people who park their carts all day while at the beach into the mix. And we can't park on our own streets 60 percent of the time. Many times, we have to park several blocks away. This is not fair to the homeowners that pay property taxes and full-time tenants who live on Lower Descanso. We, the homeowners and tenants, should not be punished because some people on the island are just too lazy to walk or pay for a taxi. On Lower Descanso, Tuesday and Thursday, street sweeping days, those who normally park on our street to go to work and to go to the boat manage to either walk, find somewhere else to park, or take a taxi. If they are able to do that during the two days of street sweeping, then they should be able to do that seven days a week. There is a woman, whose name I will not mention here, that parks her golf cart on Lower Descanso five consecutive days. The cart does not move, while she is over on the mainland for work. And then she comes home to where her residence is here and stays here, too. That has been going on for a year and a half. I called the sheriffs to continually chalk her, and after nothing being done about it, Captain Hawking came out and had a discussion with me that there is nothing they could do because there is nowhere to tow the carts to. That's not our problem on Lower Descanso. That is a city problem, and we should not be paying for that. The parking for the homeowners and full-time residents become even worse on the Tuesday and, Thursday and Thursday, street sweeping days. On those days, many of us plan on not using our carts during the hours of 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. If we do, we will be unable to find a place to park. We are petitioning to have one side of the street on Lower Descanso painted green with one-hour parking only, unless you have a special Lower Descanso parking sticker, like the Byrd Park and Hamilton Cove stickers. That will enable all homeowners and tenants to be able to park their carts and their cars, with the other side of the street to remain, one, to remain unlimited parking. If the homeowner has a full-time tenant, they would give their tenant the sticker so the tenant could put it on their golf cart or vehicle. If the homeowner's house has two units where the homeowner lives and one unit and their tenant on the, and the other, the homeowner would use his sticker and apply, for his own cart or car, and apply for an additional sticker for their tenant with a proof of current rental contract. If the homeowner has two full-time rental units and they both rent out, again, the homeowner can give his one sticker to the, to one tenant and apply for the other tenant, again, showing a legal rental contract. Just like you have to re-register your golf cart and car every year, homeowners at the time would have to re-register for a Lower Descanso parking sticker every year. This can be done at the time that they re-register their golf cart or their car. We are also petitioning today to change the 72-hour limit to a 24-hour limit, forcing residents to use a dial-a-ride taxi or walk to the boat when they go to the mainland for a period of more than 24 hours. There is no reason why anyone other than a homeowner or tenant should be parking on Lower Descanso for more than 24 hours. We constantly see people park, get out of their carts and their cars with luggage, and they're gone for five days. Daily, it's a daily thing. Homeowner parking-only permits are not new. They are done in hundreds of thousands of cities across the United States. Just to name a few, they are on the streets in Beverly Hills, Portland, Manhattan Beach, Seattle, Sausalito, West Hollywood, Laguna Beach, Santa Barbara, Newport Beach, Long Beach, et cetera. I think you get the idea. With both homeowner parking permits and a 24-hour parking limit, Code enforcement would also need to actually enforce these parking restrictions by chalking tires and then continually follow-up and ticket. But the rules must apply to everyone, not everyone except their family and their friends. Per the recent Islander article, the city is looking for new revenue streams. Most cities raise a substantial amount of money from parking violations. This could be a good place for additional revenue to the city. I have been told that you are revisiting the one-hour parking only on both sides of the street on Lower Catalina Street, and that would change, that change would ease up the parking on Lower Descanso. I personally started speaking with you, the city council, and sending emails to you regarding the parking problems on Lower Descanso back in the summer of 2016, long before the Vons broke ground. I was told multiple times over one and a half years that you were going to discuss it at the next transportation meeting. Then I was told for a year you were going to address the Lower Descanso parking when you did the Vons street parking. For three years, you have been kicking this can down the road. I have been getting nothing but excuses, and as you can see from this petition, and the people are gonna be getting up and speaking after me, that these are not just my frustrations. We, the homeowners and full-time tenants, feel these are reasonable requests. I'd like to point out one of the photos that you got. This is what we're fighting for. This picture was taken in the winter. So do not think that it is a summer problem for us, it is a year-round problem for us. Now I'd like to read a couple statements for, from people who were unable to be here today. This is from Lauren Nelson, homeowner of 201 Descanso. "The parking restrictions on Catalina Street have made a huge impact to the parking situation on Lower Descanso. Cars, golf carts, and trucks park on Lower Descanso for days on end, but no citations are given. I ask that you please implement the changes we are asking for." Thank you for your time, Lauren Nelson. This is from, I don't, she didn't, her, her unit's in here. "My husband and I have only lived at 208 Descanso for about a year now, and the parking situation needs to be addressed. We usually choose to walk to work to avoid having to find parking later in the day. On street sweeping days, we do not use our golf cart before 12:00 noon unless absolutely necessary, as there is usually someone waiting to take our spot as soon as we get into the cart. I personally have had to park on Upper Descanso or Clarissa multiple times, and we live only four houses from Third Street. Due to the lack of parking for residents on Descanso, we have received three different parking violations when someone has pushed or moved our carts so they could fit or park closer. Two of these violations were for blocking the driveway..." Two of these violations were for blocking the driveway and one handicap violation that I'm currently contesting. Being residents on the street, we are well aware of where we are allowed to park. Um, why would we knowingly block our neighbor's driveway or move into a handicap spot, which is a four-hundred-dollar fine? We have to see these people regularly, and the residents on the street are very considerate. Most of the non-homeowners and non-residents I see parking on Descanso work on the pier, the conservancy, the lobster trap, et cetera. Even if there are, say, ten people per the mentioned businesses that park on our street, that is thirty parking spots unavailable for at least eight hours. Not to mention those just coming into town for lunch from Edison or the Quarry. Most of those vehicles are full-size vehicles and take up at least two cart spaces. We understand that not everyone has the option of walking to work, but there should be some time restrictions for non-homeowners and non-residents. We both agree that resident parking stickers with designated parking would at least alleviate some of the congestion, not to mention the revenue for the city in parking citations for those violating the new parking policies. We appreciate your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, John and Kelly Leonardi." To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to shed some light onto a very frustrating situation that we who live on Lower Descanso deal with on a daily basis. My husband Chris and I have lived and worked here in Avalon for over a year now. My family has owned the property at two twenty-nine Descanso since the late seventies. It is a duplex, and previously the upstairs was left vacant for only family visits. Downstairs has always been rented to a full-time tenant. All previous visits to the island for us have been purely for pleasure. We were blissfully ignorant of the day-to-day difficulties that the folks who live and work here must endure. A typical work weekday starts with Chris leaving the house around seven AM. Then, when he pulls our stomach away from the curb to drive out to Pebly Beach, he knows that what faces him when he comes home for lunch and then again at the end of the day. I work at Leo's Drugstore, so, so I only have a three-minute stroll. It's my only three-minute stroll as stress fee. I do take notice now of how quickly our street has filled up with parked cars. By nine AM, both sides are bumper to bumper. I am always baffled at the reason so many islanders park on our street, lock their vehicles, and leave with luggage in hand for days at end. For Chris, the most frustrating situation is on shopping day. Unloading a case of water and other heavy groceries onto the sidewalk in front of our house, double-parked with flashes on, makes for a very unhappy man. The fact that he then must park off in blocks away is simply unacceptable. I, I am always very concerned about our tenants downstairs. They are a lovely older couple who have some trouble getting around. So often, I see them struggling. To maneuver his walker down the sidewalk to wherever they found a place to park their golf cart, and again, often far away, for them simply remembering where they parked, it can cause, it can cause them to not want to, to get out and about at all. We have the right to enjoy this wonderful city, and that includes the right to park near our homes. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Anita Osborne."
Are you, how many more letters are you going to read?
I have two.
Two, I mean, 'cause I believe they're all saying the same thing, and we, we very much understand the problem a lot.
But I think that they have a right to have their voices heard, with all due respect.
Oh, I agree, but, okay.
And a lot of people work. We have full-time tenants on the street, it's not just homeowners. And they can't take off work to come here today.
Exactly.
Okay, "Dear City Council, thank you for your attention on this matter. My husband and I have been renting a home for the past three years at two fifteen Descanso. We would like to wholeheartedly agree with the challenges expressed by Debbie Wright regarding the limited parking on our street. Therefore, we are in support of one-hour parking limit with permits for residents. Thank you for your consideration, Julie Ann Lewis." Okay, I miss, I just have a few more comments, and I would like everyone else to have an opportunity to speak. As I said before, no one can park on Lower Descanso on Tuesdays and Thursdays due to street sweeping. Where do they park? Do they walk? Do they, if so, they can walk on the other days. Regarding the cars and the flats, I, oh, I'm sorry, I've got this out of order. You know what, I'm gonna let other people speak, and I'll get it in order, and I'll come back up.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, I just wanna add in my two cents that I, um, the issue of parking is not a Descanso issue. It is a, it is a city-wide issue. It happens on Clarissa, Clemente, Lower Terrace, Sumner, Catalina, and obviously in Whitley and Marilla as well. So I very much hear that. Um, I, I think, for me personally, I just wanna say, your voices are being heard, but I would love for us to spend a significant amount of the time that we have today talking about solutions. We know the complaint, so with all due respect, if we're all gonna say the same thing, let's start talking about solutions, 'cause I think that's where we would better utilize our time. If there are-
I mean, they, they have come up, solutions.
Okay, I have some solutions. "The Catalina Island Conservancy employees have parked on Lower Descanso for years. Now that the Trailhead has opened, the burden on Lower Descanso is even greater than before. The conservancy has, has parking at the Nature Center located on Avalon Canyon Road. Perhaps their employees can park up there and the conservancy can shuttle them down into town in the morning and back up to the Nature Center at the end of the day." The, uh, by, I, I want to explain, if you heard my words, we believe that by creating a situation where you're forcing to people, if they're gonna go over town for, you know, for more than twenty-four hours, take a taxi or walk. You know, if you're, you know, if you, if you live close to Lower Descanso, walk. We could live in a town where people are so lazy that they drive their kids to school in golf carts who are six and eight blocks away. So it's no wonder that we have adults in this town who are lazy and can't walk. You know, we, we can all walk. You know, granted, there are some people that have difficulties, but it's gotten out of hand, and it's, we've watched it get out of hand. In nineteen ninety-one, Judith Longear, she did a petition on Lower Descanso regarding the truck routes. Almost every homeowner that signed that petition still owns a home in Descanso today. If you look at that petition, these homeowners go back to a hundred years. These are original homeowners. This is not what they bought into, and I realize that there's more people living on the island than there were before. However, if certain things aren't put into place, it's gonna continue to be out of hand, and people are still not gonna walk, and people are still not gonna take a dial-a-ride or a taxi. There are solutions, and we feel that what we're putting forth is reasonable and helps with that solution. So anyway, I'll let other people talk.
Paula Patterson, two twenty-one Whitley. And as a member of the Planning Commission, this is one of the charges you gave us as a council to investigate. And we've had, um, not as much as I would like, we've been focusing on transient rentals, but I think about it a lot, and I agree with you, um, Councilman Cindy, that, um, it's about solutions. So I think one of the biggest parts of it is that, um, we only have so much enforcement capability. That's, so no matter what we do, how's that gonna work? And it also is dependent upon, um, who, who is gonna do it and how we're gonna do it and a timeline for doing so. Part of the part, some of the things I think, I mean, I really like the colored stickers per street, that you live on a street, you, um, are, you can park there anytime, and people that are visiting, 'cause that's what I hear. I live on Whitley, and Whitley's a mess. And, um, people say, "Well, if, are you saying that I can't come and visit my friends till ten o'clock at night? And what would I do?" Um, so I say, "I guess you would walk home, or walk there, or have your friends come get you." So the way it works in many cities is that, um, from ten o'clock to eight o'clock, only stickered people for that residence can be there. And I think it's also, if, if we did that on the highly impacted streets, as Devon's report showed us, it would also help us get a grip on who has, who actually is, I have to, I have to show proof of residency to get a library card. So when we issue stickers, it could be that you have to show a utility bill or some other thing that says a lease, whatever, that shows that that's the street you live on and that's your address. And we could get a grip on, on that. So that's just one little thing I was thinking about. And, and I also wanna say that none of this, for me, applies to people with handicaps. I mean, they should be able to park wherever they want. It's very clear about how that goes, is that that does not apply to people with difficulties. And just wanna get that clear, because that's always a consideration. We have a substantial older population, and I think we have to always think about them. Um, the other thing I was thinking about is that we are looking for revenue in the city. And when I go over to, um, and I know this just is gonna cause, like, havoc, you know, people are gonna freak out, but on the streets like Beacon, Metropole, and Lower Catalina, I don't see why we couldn't have metered parking. And then people that are going to the beach, you know, if you go to the one at Long Beach, you can do it digitally on your phone. You don't have to get up and fill a meter. It's done on a credit card. There's no money involved. I mean, you, you can do it with money, but it could be a revenue source for our city as well and help to, um... It's not our job to provide parking. It's our job to enhance the, the island and the Avalon experience. So that's something else I think about, that I think on certain highly impacted streets, not residential, but those, the ones that are, you know, the ones I said, could have metered parking. You don't have to have a meter per space. You do it for an area. You've all done it over town, so I don't know why we can't have that at some point in time, perhaps. And then the other thing I think about is, um, we have transit buses, and, and, and this is a huge, far-reaching thing, but they're so big, and I, I know we're looking at all of this kinda stuff. To me, we, they should be smaller and the route should be more frequent. So people that do live out, don't want to, that they could get transit into town in a more efficient way. And maybe with a resident card, they ride free. Just a thought. So those are some suggestions I have towards, um, solving a problem. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Tim Winslow, two 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 Catalina. Uh, you have to remember that when you, uh, park on any one of those streets, uh, going down to have lunch, uh, it takes over an hour. So my only thought, uh, is because it's working on Catalina, but not on Upper Catalina. The people that cannot park near our residence or work in town have to park farther away. But a two-hour, uh, parking would at least give people time to go and have lunch, or to the beach for a while, or to shop a little, and, uh, and then they'll have to move their car or cart. But I, uh, my wife is, is, uh, unable to walk due to the chemo giving her imbalance, and, uh, we're not asking for a blue, uh, curb, because that, that is taking away from other people who, of course, would like to park in that area. But there should be a way to talk to, uh, the, the doctors here to not frivolously give away or give them the right to have a blue curb, because I think some people cheat a little. Oh, did I say that? But some people cheat a little. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I, that one-hour parking was, the one-hour parking was a concern that I had. Is, is that enough to go to Vons, maybe walk down and get your mail, you know, so that you actually are walking? But, so I know, the one hour's not really exciting to me, but something a little longer, perhaps.
Debbie Tarpley, two thirty, Descanso. Um, I would just like to request that when you get your thing going in the next few months with, uh, somebody maybe coming in and consulting you and telling you what to do. I really think the main problem for my husband and I on Descanso is the people that are parking to work eight hours a day, and their cars are there eight hours a day, or the ones that grab their suitcases and go over town. Um, it's not really the ones, for me, it doesn't bother me if they're there for two hours. I mean, usually if they're going to the beach, four hours, maybe, and then they're back. So that's not really my concern where I am, but my concern is the eight hours and the, you know, going over town for five days or whatever, 'cause they can do it Thursday to Monday, and they do it. They plan their trips that way, so they're there forever. And if they're blocking my driveway, then that's five days. I can't park in my driveway. So, you know, I would like those addressed. So if you could make that happen, I'd appreciate it.
Other comments? Mr. Piacentini, did you wanna talk with us? To us, at us?
Members of the council and people in the audience, my name is Bobby Piacentini. I've lived on Lower Descanso for sixty-five years in three different houses. When I was a little kid, I remember Earl Cadman building sixty to eighty lobster traps below Beacon on Descanso. Nobody said a word. We used to play football on the street and only have to move or stop playing about every forty-five minutes to let a car go by. Yes, that was a long time ago. Yes, times change. But the current change has become totally unacceptable. Our quality of life has been totally downgraded. Descanso has always been a great street to live on. Real estate agents used to call our street "the best street on the flats." Not anymore. The parking situation has become a feeding frenzy or parking frenzy. Normally nice people acting like piranha. They will not hesitate to push your cart forward or back into the bumper of the cart in front or back. If you want to get out, you have to move two or three carts in order to do that. They will push your cart into the red, or, like two weeks ago, push you into the handicap spot where that cart got a ticket for over three hundred dollars. Last week, a guy in a red Jeep-type vehicle pushed a cart forward into the back bumper of a Smart Car parked in front. Parked his vehicle two inches from the back bumper of the cart and went to work. Eight hours later, the vehicles were still there, the cart unable to move. I see this type of behavior every day from my front window, five feet from the curb. I could go on for the rest of this meeting, but I think you get the point. Please, do something to restore some quality of life on Lower Descanso. Make us proud of living on the street once called "the best street on the flats." I had a few other things, but I can save that for another time. Like the fifty to seventy-five Holiday Inn buses that go by my house every day.
Right, right. Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Kim Koenig. I live at two thirty-six Descanso. I'm a homeowner and also a full-time resident. Uh, we applaud Debbie Wright for getting the ball rolling here, because since we've been here, we've been homeowners, the family's been homeowners for close to sixty years, and we've never seen the parking like it is now. Uh, another concern, this is on another thing too, is that, um, I have a concern that they have paid parking at the old Vons Express parking lot, and it's on a month-to-month basis right now until the tenant moves in. These are mostly business owners and staff from downtown businesses. Where will they be parking when the tenant goes in? Will they be parking on our street? Because they can't park on Catalina. So again, that's more cars that we're gonna have on Descanso. So another thing to look at.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, good point. No other comments or new comments? Council? Comments?
Debbie, can you come up for one second? Since you're kinda leading the group, I just wanna ask a couple of questions. So if we were to take one side and do parking as what we've done on the other streets, what would, I know some of the concerns were that, uh, people are still gonna, you know, seventy-two hours or go over town on the other side of the street. How do you think that's gonna work?
Well, this is the thing. First of all, you have a seventy-two-hour ordinance-
Right.
-that you don't even follow up on. You know, it's-
You know, and everyone knows that. They know that. They know they're not going to get a ticket. They know they can leave their carts there for unlimited times. We're asking for a 24-hour limit, because as I said before, there is absolutely no reason for anyone to be parking on Lower Descanso more than 24 hours. If you need to be gone for more than 24 hours, then you need to find another way to get to the boat. I'm sorry, a $2 ticket, are you kidding me? And it's just really unfair that Lower Descanso bears the burden for everybody else's bullshit. Excuse my language.
But it's not just Lower Descanso.
I understand that.
It's Clarissa Clemente and Lower Terrace as well.
I understand that.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I hear the passion in it, because I feel it too. But it is, it is a person issue.
Oh, I agree.
It is a person, which is what you're saying.
I agree.
But it's not just Descanso.
I agree. So if you take away their ability to be able to park there more than 24 hours, they will walk, they will take a taxi. You know, we're just continuing to look the other way for bad behavior in this town on many, many levels. And that's why bad behavior happens on such a rampant pace as it does on many levels in this town. And at one point, are we going to stop looking the other way? I'm going to read you something from Bill White. For those who do not know who Bill White is, he still has a family home of 100 years. He's no longer with us, but his family home of 100 years is still there. He was mayor from 1937 to 1942, I believe. And this is what he wrote, there's a long letter, I won't read the whole letter to the city, but on June 25th, 1991, 1991, to Mr. Hugh Smith, Mayor, City of Avalon, City Hall. Dear Mr. Mayor Smith, my purpose in writing this letter is to register a complaint to you and the Avalon City Council for the deplorable traffic and congestion that has developed on the 200 block of Descanso Avenue. 1991, and it has consistently gotten worse year after year.
And what was your other question, Councilman?
I just wanted to know what you thought the impact would be. So what you were asking would be to have one side would be permitted for residents, and then the other side would be 24 hours?
Correct.
Okay.
That's what we're asking for. And I don't think that's unreasonable.
But then, is that a Debbie as well?
Debbie Tarpley.
Yes, yeah.
Debbie also?
Yeah.
But you were just talking about wanting four hours on Descanso, right? And then people would get a permit in four hours.
No, I mean, I was just saying, I see.
Well, no, I'm kind of agreeing with you. I guess, I guess I don't, is it Alex? Okay. Why would you even want 24, I guess is my question.
Because it keeps people from going over town and leaving their carts for unlimited amounts of time. That's, that's a major, major problem on our street.
I know, but I'm saying 24 hours seems like a long time to allow them, because that does allow them.
Oh, hey, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with four. I'm just trying to be a somewhat reasonable, you know, person. But regarding the beach, the beach people, I sit on my porch, those of you who walk past my porch all the time, you know I'm always on my porch, and I see people walk, tourists, walk by with wagons. They walk by with wagons, with all their beach stuff. And they do that because they don't have a vehicle here, because they're renting vacation rentals. So my question is, why can't locals do that? If the visitors can do it, what makes the locals so special? I had a girl that I talked to on the street who, her friend was outside, and she said, "Well, I don't want the street to change." She goes, "Because I take my kids to the beach." And I said, "Then you can walk to the beach with your kids with a wagon, just like the tourists do." I've lost all my patience for anyone on this subject. They'll tell you. You know, it's just, it's, it's becoming between the CUPs and the parking on Lower Descanso, why do we want to live here? Because our quality of life has gotten so bad on Lower Descanso.
So one of the things when I'm talking about solutions is, we can do all the stickering we want all over town. We can spend thousands of dollars developing that system. But the, the solution has to be, who is going to administer that system? And, and I, this is not going to be a popular comment, I realize, but it is fact. We have limited ability with the code enforcement that we have. So with, and City Manager Denise could, could explain this in better detail than I can, but code enforcement's job is only a stitch of parking. So if, if we go to a system, the solution can't just be a sticker system. Because like you're saying, Debbie, we can issue all the stickers we want, we can spend all the money we want, but if we don't enforce it, we don't have the means physically to be able to enforce the parking, which is what we're talking about as a solution of stickers. So that means that somehow, we need to look at, are we going to have an 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or seven-day-a-week parking person that we, that the city hires? How do we pay for, how, excuse me, I'm talking. How do we pay for that person? Where does that money come from? And, and how do we justify, you know, yes, we likely would be able to cite vehicles for a certain period of time, but is that going to be enough to cover the salary of that person? And so I think the council needs to really talk about that part of the solution, is how are we going to administer any sort of sticker system?
Let me ask a question. If though we limited the hours of parking, you might not need a sticker. Because if I can only park there for four hours, or whatever, then, then it's just a matter of code enforcement ticketing.
What you got, the residents?
Plus you have the residents.
They're not going to know the difference between a resident and a...
Oh yeah, they know everybody's cart. They probably do.
But then what, what happens if somebody parks at, our code enforcement is not an eight-to-five situation either. I mean, we have things that code enforcement does 24 hours a day, and we only have so, so many human body of, of time that code enforcement is out there. So if we, if, if you're going to do a marking at 1:00, and what if code enforcement is now spending the rest of their shift working on other code enforcement-related issues? We can't guarantee that that person is going to be able to make it back for all the chalkings.
You don't actually need someone for eight hours. I mean, if you look, if I get up and I walk outside at 7:00 in the morning, there's not a place to park on Lower Descanso. And that's because of people going to the 7:45 boat and people going to work. So you don't really need to have someone eight hours to enforce it. You really need those crucial hours from like 7:00 AM to like 11:00.
Okay, let me back up as we're looking for solutions, because we're not going to put down the gavel and say, "This is the way it is today." But it's sounding like some sort of time limit on the street, and maybe some kind of sticker for those who live on the street, but talk, but talk with code perhaps, and, and, because we've got a lot of good data here, and a lot of great comments. So why don't we have code and city staff take that back? I know the bubble may go, or the balloon, or whatever, and it probably will go to Upper Descanso, which is where I happen to reside, but, but I'm willing to, if we could take one step at a time and see where the bubble goes, you know, and see where it pulls over, and try it on that street first, because Catalina doesn't seem to be a problem. Now, I don't see a lot of people here from Upper Catalina complaining that they don't have a place to park. Oh, Upper Catal, okay, okay. But, okay, and how, do we have pictures of Upper Catalina? Does it look like Lower Descanso, do you think, ever?
I have pictures that I've taken on a three-day-a-week of Catalina for the last seven months. So, I mean, Catalina is not nearly as impacted, especially in those mornings, and certainly not now that we've done the one-hour parking for, for that. But all of those people that used to park from 7:00 in the morning on, on Catalina are now moving over a street. But, so, so it is, you know, there are some vehicles that are on Upper Catalina, but I mean, I've photographed it over and over and over and over and over again, and there is parking available on Upper Catalina.
But we'll let Jim speak when we talk about Catalina.
That being said, the other thing with your suggestion that I would like the city to look into is, is there, is there some sort of community policing option that we have, where we're not necessarily paying code enforcement? Like, is there a hotline that we can put in that maybe doesn't require us to put in an, you know, an $80,000 a year impact of hiring another code enforcement or a parking officer? What, what is the community's participation that we could have in this process?
Go ahead, Michael.
I was just going to say, if, if staff would like, I mean, if council would like, what staff will do is compile all of these solutions that, potential solutions that you would like us to look into, and then we can consult with the traffic engineer and then come up with, you know, here's the feasibility, and here's the potential impacts, and here's, by implementing this, or this, or this, here's the projected out costs, and then bring it back, whatever you guys decide, bring it back, and then make a final decision based off of that report.
And what do you think the timeline for something like that would be, Michael?
I'd say at a minimum, we would need, depending on how many strategies you want us to look at, three to four weeks.
Oh, okay. That, that sounds good. And, and I, go ahead, Debbie.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify. I heard some people, I don't know which one of you were saying it, but speaking, saying residents, residents. Some of us here are not residents, but we've owned homes. I've owned my home for 16 years, and, you know, I'm here for like 10 days at 4th of July, three weeks in August, at least one long weekend a month. But I would like to be able to park my car on the street when I'm here.
Where do you park it when you're not here?
I park it in front of my front door, so it's really hard to get in and out. So when I'm here, I like to park it on the street, and then I just put, you know, when I go over town, it's not on the street at all.
Do you have a curb cut?
Do I have a curb pad? Yes.
Oh, so really, you, so you do have off-street parking?
I do have off-street parking legally, but my house is tricky because I share it with my neighbors. So we have like a joint, like three feet. So if I park my golf cart there all the time, they can't get out of their backyard. So I like to do it just overnight. So I would need to be able to park on the street during the day so that they can get in and out. We have a tricky situation, so that they can get in and out. So I just want to make sure it's not, and some of these people here are not residents as well. They're, you know, they've lived their houses for years. So we need to be able to park, not just residents, but homeowners.
Yeah, I understand, perfect.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Luchahan, 323 Catalina. And to Cindy's point, yes, it's, it's not without spaces to park on Upper Catalina, but we have been significantly impacted. I think there's been a shift of employee vehicles that used to park all day on Lower Catalina. We have always had the impact of residents on Eucalyptus that doesn't have its own parking in front, so that's always been a, a place where people park for that street. And I think we're seeing a lot more commercial vehicle parking, you know, because they seem to be full-size vehicles that are maybe used in service of a business or something like that. You know, most of us on the flats look out our window, and I even built a high railing and planter so that I didn't have people staring at me watching TV, but the big-sized vehicles are up above that. And I'm distinctly aware of that difference pre, pre-parking on Lower Catalina was mostly golf carts, Smart Cars out front. Now it's SUVs and pickups and things with logos on them.
Right, yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Chuck Martin, 352 Catalina. And between the church down the street that's always got functions going on, and the people now that work downtown that are parking here, right, I can park in front of my house a lot of the times. A lot of the times I can't. We have a car on our street that has got a permit and has had for the 20 years that I've been here, and the woman who owns the cart hasn't lived in town in 18 years. And she has a home here, and when I asked the guy who handles this kind of stuff about it, he said, "Oh, she's grandfathered, Ralph grandfathered her, so she's got a permit till she dies." She doesn't even live here.
And the car's parked on the street all the time, or no?
Somebody, somebody in the neighborhood was given the right to use the car, and so between their car and that cart, there's two more spots gone. The other problem we have is probably what Paula brought up, that people use any address in town to be able to get their cart parked. You know, they, before, and we have new owners next door now, so it's not going to be a problem anymore, three or four families lived up there, and they go around town, however they do it, find an address that doesn't have a cart associated with it, and use that address. And I don't, you know, you talk about policing by the police, what about policing by the guy who handles the cars? He just gives them, you know, "She's grandfathered, I'm sorry, I can't do anything about it."
Well, I mean, that, if there is, if there is an address or a license number or whatever, so that could be looked into, that's, that's fine. I don't know about grandfathers.
As Paula said, maybe you got to have some kind of proof that person is really living where they say.
Right. And I don't know exactly what it is that we do now, Denise, to verify, but...
Yeah, we do not. So that was a really great suggestion today about showing maybe a utility bill or something. We could do that in addition. I do like that idea.
Great, good.
Well, parking still is an issue. We had a guy who lived on Beacon, and he parked on Beacon a truck. But he would, on Fridays, he'd go over town, so he'd move the truck in front of our house for the weekend. So it was there from Friday morning till he came back on Monday. We finally caught him and told him about the situation, and he accommodated us. He doesn't park there anymore, and that's really nice. But, you know, people will do whatever they can.
The 72-hour thing is...
I think that, you know, as far, I don't know how many people have got grandfathered permits. They shouldn't have them. I don't even know, the lady probably isn't even alive.
Yeah, yeah. Well, give us the address, or their vehicle or something, and they can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, you know what? To ask the question after eight years of a person not being here and saying, "Oh, she, Ralph grandfathered her." Ralph.
Yeah, well, we can look into that if you give us the information.
I think that's a valuable solution as well, is that, you know, we do have full-size vehicles here, that of, of persons who are no longer living in the community, and banked stickers of people who are not living in the community. So that was something we talked about before, was looking at the bank sticker, and if you're not currently a resident, each year when that comes around to be looking at that list, then you should lose your spot on the list.
It comes around, and obviously it's just issued because it's grandfathered. One other issue that really doesn't affect me is, you know, back when I was on the commission, we, when they built the Yamaha dealer, that building was going to be big enough that they're not going to have to park on Catalina anymore. I had my car fixed last Tuesday, and they called and said, "Your car's ready." They might as well have just drove it to my house, because I walked down the street and there was my cart. And so I got to walk all the way to Yamaha to get my keys to walk all the way back and get my cart. You know, they, they said they weren't going to be, there are so many Yamaha carts on Catalina Avenue, I'm surprised people on that street aren't just...
And Wisconsin.
Yeah.
And Clarissa.
So that's, that's an issue that wasn't supposed to be, but is. So, thank you.
Mr. Winslow?
I think that'd be good to reach out to them and the Conservancy. My notes, I've got them in my notes.
This is going to show how I'm living in the past.
The rickshaw, the rickshaw you used to do?
Yes.
Okay.
When I was a deputy, when Lincoln was in office, I used to drive my radio car in front of the street sweeper, well in front, and sighted those people. And crime is not running rampant in this city, as far as I can see. So what are the sheriffs doing? I mean, I think I can stand here and I can say, "I don't think they're doing as much as we used to do in the past. I don't see them on Front Street. I don't see them patrolling." So I think that when you have your weekly discussion with a captain, you should find out if there's something that they could do to take up some of the slack that code enforcement can't do. I really am dissatisfied with what I see. I don't know what's going on behind the scenes, you know, if they're crime fighting, you know, with Batman or whatever, but, you know, it's just, they could be doing more for what we pay them for. Now I'm going to catch hell from the guys I know, so...
You're going to get pulled over now.
Yeah, yes.
No, there's no such thing as retaliation.
Hi, I'm Mike Carlson at 232 Descanso. It's been a family house for about 75 years. First, I want to thank Debbie for all the work and effort she's put into this, because it is a big issue, just over the time that I've been around, that I've seen. I know you've asked for solutions, and not everyone just to get up here and complain. Maybe a solution would be a long-term parking lot out at the mole in some city property that people could park out there and have to pay a fee to raise revenue. Or to have a parking lot closer to the beach, like they do at all the beach cities, where you go into and you pay 15, 20 bucks... you go into and you pay 15, 20 bucks a day to park. So you're raising revenue, you're easing the parking on the streets and, you know, making everybody else happy. So I think the city could maybe look into that and do their part to supply the area to have a parking lot. And also, one other quick thing is that if you, a commercial vehicle should not be able to park on a residential street. We have Conservancy vehicles, we have Island Company vehicles, and a lot of Edison and AT&amp;T that they'll park their cars and take a lot of space, they're big vehicles.
Right.
So that might be something would be easy to address to keep them off the street.
Overnight parking, yeah. They, they're not, commercial vehicles are not allowed to be on the city streets overnight.
I understand overnight, but they're there, a lot of times they're all day long, taking up space. And...
No, those are some of those 72-hour people too.
Yeah. And I also agree with, with Bobby about the Holiday Inn, 75 trips a day up and down the street. I know the buses don't do it anymore. I don't think the taxis and, you know, the Holiday Inn people are just making the loop and it's easy for them to come down to Descanso, loop around and go back up.
And that's why I believe that was allowed, because they didn't want to have to go down, right or wrong, you know, go down Catalina and then how do they, how do they turn? Do they go into the plaza and back out and do that?
Well, you could actually do a turnabout inside the plaza. They could actually, instead of people standing on the curb right there, they could actually, it'd be safer if they're in the plaza and they could just loop. You'd have to do another cutoff for the driveway, but it would give them a nice...
And that's Island Company property.
Okay, well...
But I, I think the city...
I know, but a conversation.
But the city, the city could reach out and maybe ask the Island Company if that would be acceptable, because that's a, that's a good solution. And also with the part of what was on our list that we talked about previously and, and what you were saying is finding a way to be able to park at the mole. And the parking at the mole went away when we had the geological study and the road became unsafe and we put the K-rail and that took a lot of that space up. But could the city, could we look into whether or not we could park golf cart size near that K-rail for persons going over town? And then whether or not that could be a metered situation where it is like a $15 eight-hour meter or something where people could go and go over town for the day, park along Pebley Beach right there and generate some revenue.
I'm, I'm not real excited about that, just because we have those picnic benches out there now and it's nice and it's used, and, but then we'd have to go into the road. I don't know, that might be a big expense for...
Not all the way through Lover's Cove, where it used to be, from the mole parking lot back to...
Yeah, but all that K-rail is there and that's really dangerous. What if those rocks come down on those golf carts? Or those vehicles? Because we're having a lot of rock falls. I would, that's not, yeah, that's not a good suggest, it's not good for me, but yes, they can, if they want to mull that around, you can mull that around.
I think it's worth looking into because we're talking about, we need a place for people that are going to drive no matter what.
It's $2, you know, it's $2 for a dial right in the art. I mean, Edison has, how many vehicles, Conservancy has, how many vehicles that somebody can't drop them off and say, here, now you go over town for the weekend? I mean, to me, they need to be part of the solution and, and to reach out to them, to make them part of the solution, to understand and hopefully the Conservancy and Edison and all those folks are, Steve Hawes out at Sunlight Auto, I mean, hopefully all those people are aware of what they are creating. Maybe they just don't give it any thought, but I think now they're going to know. So reaching out to them, I think, would be a good idea.
So, I just wanted to say too, that I, the city's doing, the taxi thing is such a deal. I mean, I just, I think that is a really good option. So when we started looking at this on the commission, Amanda prepared for us how many other cities dealt with some of their larger parking issues. And the one that spoke to me, and it's pie in the sky, but it's the way, what you're talking about here, and many people mentioned it, about how people just come to town to park, to work, to, is that, is that it's a shift in culture and a shift in thought. So what you have to do to make that happen is make it easier for people not to drive to town. And it's not about providing more parking, it's about providing more alternatives to driving downtown. So once again, that goes towards transit, it goes towards that really, the great taxi program that we have, that I don't know what stops people from doing that because it's a great option. And then the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, my dream is to have Metropole to Beacon to Clarissa be, you know, as much as possible, of course, not that is, vehicle-free. But the other big problem that we have is this, is that we have deliveries happening all day long. I, I wish at some point in time, and this is a whole other thing, is that, you know, deliveries could conclude at 10:00 AM and not resume until, I don't know, that there would be some kind of limited time, you know, depending on what the barge is, that we don't have giant trucks. It's almost impossible downtown. It's almost impossible to stand on any street in Avalon and have a conversation where there's traffic because the noise is so loud from trucks and golf carts, et cetera. And I think that's sad in our beautiful little town. So I don't know, I think it's about a culture shift, about thinking about not making it easier to drive, but making it easier to get to be downtown for everybody and it's so much more convenient, so.
Yes. And let me ask a question. Do we have hours of delivery for like, in the downtown?
Yes, it's 11:00 AM.
Up to 11?
Up to 11:00 AM.
All right.
And that's on the pedestrian walkway of the bricks.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Good morning, I'm Cynthia Valeriano, I live at 241 Descanso. I've owned my house for 38 years. I am there approximately six months out of the year. I understand all these situations. I have one gripe and I have one maybe solution. I think if you do the stickers and you do do ticketing, the money will come because you'll get money from the tickets and you can pay for a code enforcement person with that money. Also, I think big businesses, commercial vehicles should park overnight at their place of business. I had an AT&amp;T very large truck parked in front of my house for five days straight. Not only was it so large that I could not look out my window at all, not at all. And also, it was filthy. I mean, and it really, I have to say, impacted being able to have an enjoyable weekend in my home. And then I got angry and I was counting the days, looking every day, look, you know, it was five days. So that's my sort of solution.
Great.
And I do also have a complaint. People that park all day to go to work, they walk down between my home and the other home from the alley every morning, 7 o'clock, skinny guy, lots of hair, walks by, looks in my window where I'm sleeping and parks, you know, and then goes out that way, he comes back in that way and drives away every day, eight hours later. So...
So that's considered trespassing?
Yeah, well, I've tried to tell them to move, they don't move. I can't put a gate up because my neighbor doesn't want to have to go through the gate every time to go empty her trash, which I understand. So, anyway, I still love living in Catalina.
Great.
I think that does bring up another point for city, for us to look at, which is going to be another unpopular potential solution, is we, the city, need to go back and look at these particular special, special permits. And for the life of me, the term just poof, went away. But it's, it's like the public service, it's a public service permit. So AT&amp;T, the hospital, the, the Conservancy doesn't have public service permits. Edison has public service. The, the termite control companies get public service permits. And are those, are those really necessary? Because if you have a public service permit, that does allow you to park on any street overnight for any length of time.
It does?
So, yeah.
I would like Dudley to come in and speak about the public service because my knowledge, they, you go to the vehicle hearing officer, which is a judge from the mainland that does not know anybody, any of the players, and they just don't pass those out. There are certain number of public service that are given, say, like to Edison. The rest of their stickers are commercial. I think Dr., like the veterinarian got one and yes, there are those that allow you to park and supposedly you're, you have to prove that you need to be, like, you're on call, you need to report to...
If you're a vet though, they don't make house calls.
I, I don't hold me to that, Annie. Can I get Dudley out here to answer that question?
No, yeah, but, but I, but that was part of what was just brought up. And I'm thinking, how is it possible that an AT&amp;T vehicle can park for five days overnight? But it, it's struck me as it's probably got a public service, yeah. And I, I mean, we don't have any AT&amp;T service right now anyway, so is it really a public service?
So it should be off the streets. Did you want to say something, Mrs. Greer?
I live at 355 Descanso, I'm Upper Descanso, and I want to compliment the city. When I first moved here, the parking seemed to be a problem and people were talking about it then. That was seven years ago. And so I walked down the street and looked at the parking and there were a whole bunch of handicap parking curbs that were parked. One was just down from me and it was a, for a full-size vehicle where two golf carts could have fit. Anyway, I looked around and, and then I looked around, then I looked around again. Well, there were seven of them. And of those seven that I counted, you know, a lot of them were not, not being used, ever. And so I wrote a letter to the city and I said, would you check these out? They came out immediately, two days later and painted over four of them. So every single street can look and see, I mean, the lady had died years ago and she still had a double curve. So there are little things that maybe we can do, that we could each take a look at and maybe at least alleviate some of the little things.
Thank you for that positive note. Anybody else? Go ahead Bobby.
Before I forget.
Please, if you go up to the mic, yes. Sorry, I know that's a little difficult for you.
This is where we should have a hand mic to be able to go around.
As far as the 72-hour parking limit is concerned, I was told a month ago, face-to-face, by one of the code enforcement officers, that Sundays do not count in the 72-hour limit that people have to park. And I don't want to give up the name, but he told me face-to-face that Sundays do not count as part of the 72-hour deal. I don't know if that's true or not, and I wish somebody could clarify that.
I don't know if you heard that Denise?
Yes, I, I can't verify that, I've never heard that before. So to me, it, it should count. I know that we turn a blind's eye to restricted parking in the downtown area, like in the green on Sundays. It's not in our municipal code, it seems to have always been a standard, I think because other cities don't ticket on Sundays. But I've never heard about the 72-hour.
And we do have some code, we have, we do have some code person on Sunday though to do the other kind, everything else?
Yes.
I mean, so we're covered seven days a week. And is it also my understanding that we, you, when you schedule your staff, there's kind of a, you know, maybe till 7:00 at night or something where we can find different kinds of situations?
This is our first year that we, we have code extended to 8:00 on Friday and Saturday and Sunday at 7:00.
And I also don't want code enforcement's hours publicized because that just creates this issue that Debbie brought up, that, oh, well, hey, it's 7:00, there's no code from now on.
Sorry, I was just asking.
No, I know, I know, but I, but I, we've kind of toyed around that a little bit. But we have had times where code's been on in the middle of the night and that does happen. And I just want the community to be aware that there are no set hours for code.
Code does get up and the wee hours and they're able to go and find the people that are not supposed to be parked all night on the streets. So if you're a part-time resident, you're issued the sticker that you have to be off the street at night.
Right. Yes.
First off, I want to thank you for calling this meeting for us and hearing our concerns and our frustrations. I think this meeting has gone a long way towards trying to find some kind of a solution and I want to thank you for that and I'm sure everyone here feels the same way. I would like to read two more letters from homeowners on Lower Descanso. I believe, I know that some of it is redundant, but I do believe they have a right to have their voice heard. Okay. To Avalon City Council, good morning and thank you for your service to our community. My name is Judith Longear. Regretfully, I am unable to be in Avalon today, so I've asked every right to read my thoughts and comments. My husband and I bought our house at 237 Descanso 33 years ago and have enjoyed reliving our childhood memories of family vacations on the island pre-World War II. Foot traffic and bikes were the mode of transportation, as is children. We soon learned it wasn't necessary to look ways before we crossed the street. When we settled into our house, we discovered groups of small children playing, street games, making chalk pictures in the street and watching theatricals. Presented by the children to the adoring homeowners, Descanso was safe street with little space lost to golf carts. However, the street had been discovered by truck tour buses in 1991. The mothers formed a petition to the city council requesting the trucks and tour buses use the designated truck routes. We canvassed the entire street, both Upper and Lower Descanso, and 90% of the residents gladly signed. Clearly what we did. Fortunately, the city council agreed with our request and our street returned to ball games, kick the can and chalk art. But over the years, golf carts and trucks have taken up residency as well as using the street as a racetrack. No, no more space for safe play. Avalon had a policy for limited number of permits for golf carts and trucks, which were limited in size and length. What has happened to these rules and regulations? It appears that permits are given out to anyone who asks, sometimes more than one permit for a household. Returning to the previous standards would solve much of the parking problems. Children can walk to school, groceries can be wheeled home by push cart. Debbie Wright has proposed some reasonable solutions and I hope the council will consider these suggestions and make our neighborhood quiet and safe again. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Sincerely, Judith Longear. And I have one more. And then I'm going to give these to you, so you have them. From Kevin and Renee McLeod, homeowners of 231 Descanso Avenue. We have been happy visitors for Catalina for over 38 years, staying in numerous homes and hotels all over the island. As of a year and a half ago, we were fortunate enough to buy our dream home on Lower Descanso Avenue. Since that time, we come home every Friday and Saturday, every Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We also spend weeks at a time on the island when our work over town permits. We love the island, we love Avalon, we love our neighbors and friends here. We plan to retire here in 2023. We have noticed a big change in overcrowding to the streets of Avalon. We understand more people means more carts and with limited room for parking for all. One of the changes that we feel has impacted Lower Descanso Avenue is the limited parking now available for the employees of the shops and restaurants. In the past, the employees would park all day in the business district. The city eliminated the long-term parking and changed it to one-hour parking on the street only. Because of this change, the employee parking has moved into the residential streets on the flats. We see numerous people in uniform drop off their car on Lower Descanso and walk off with a coffee cup, obviously going to work for the day. Daily, we see people park on Descanso Avenue, pull out luggage and walk over to the mole. They leave their cars abandoned on Descanso for up to a week at a time after they carefully maneuver the street sweeper. This has added to the congestion and lack of parking for all people who live and play and want to park short-term on the city center streets. From what we understand, the oversized vehicles are for business use. There are no businesses on Lower Descanso to justify parking there. It has become a dumping ground for the island's vehicles. Great statement. This is an eyesore and greatly impacts our quality of life as we cannot sit outside of our homes on our porches or bench to get fresh air and interact with our community because of some of the oversized business vehicles blocking our home. The parking congestion on Lower Descanso has become untenable. The city has obviously considered the burden it has placed on the homeowners on Catalina Street with the restricted one-hour parking. They eliminated this, this burden by issuing parking exemptions for the homeowners. This seems to have pushed the burden down the road, or in this case, pushed it onto the, the next street over. We understand that Lower Descanso is a convenient place to park to go to the beach or dinner, but limits should be placed on the duration of time allotted so that we can all enjoy our beautiful island paradise. We hope that the city can eliminate our burden as well, as well by changing the parking on Descanso to one-hour parking and issuing parking exemptions to homeowners. Let's treat all residents equally and issue parking exemptions to all residents who live on the impacted streets and issue citations to the violators of all parking infractions. Sincerely, Kevin and Renee McLeod. So I'm going to give you these. And I just want to say, when I, when I made a comment earlier about people in this town have just gotten really lazy over the years. I watch Rosie Cadman at 93 years old walk from her home on Upper Descanso into town with her walker three times a week at least, yet people from the age of 20 to 50 years old cannot walk two to eight blocks to go to work or to go to the boat.
Yes.
Oh, one more thing, regarding the.
That's actually five days a week, for sure.
Regarding vehicles, I, this is a whole separate issue, but it does, it does have something to do with what we're talking about today. People have learned how to circumvent the system on vehicle stickers and vehicles. I personally know many people in this town who have not had a car for one to five years, but they're, I believe it's called banking, their stickers. If you haven't had a car for one or two years, you should have to forfeit that sticker or get a car. It's unfair to the people who are on a 30-year waiting list to get a car. I just want to say that. The other thing is, is there are two people on our street on Lower Descanso. One of them has one, one vehicle and two golf carts, and it's one person. There's another person who has a vehicle and a cart. I don't know what you're going to do, but that is definitely part of the solution. It's a whole nother bag of worms for you guys, but just let me mention it.
Thank you.
That's one of the items.
Just hand them to.
Just hand, that's one of the items on the list, though, is reducing the number of vehicles in general.
Mm-hmm. Which I don't know, we weren't to discuss that at this point, or if that is one of the suggestions.
You've reduced the number of full-size vehicles by 221.
And that seems, that's working, you know, but then you, but then the kind of like Debbie says, and other people say, but why do I have to wait 35 years? Is it, because this system is working for vehicles, but do we eventually get down to zero vehicles?
Eventually.
I know, and is that really what we want when we want people to have access to the interior and that kind of thing, you know, so maybe the conservancy would like that, but.
And I, I do believe that, you know, if we look at, at anything that we do, like the oversized vehicles, like, no matter what we do, it has to come from changing the city's code, and that's precisely what I've been pushing for, for the last few years, is to look at the code. There are so many things that we already know, there's, Dudley has a whole list of things that, of questions and things that come up in hearings, and the reason people get what they get is because there's no code that tells the hearing officer that they can't have it. So, if somebody were to challenge it, there's no way for, for the hearing officer to be able to say, oh, well, this is the section of the code where it says, you as Cindy Cassidy can only have one autoet registered in your name, even if you have 12 different properties in town. So, you know, things like that, I think we need to bring back some sections of the code to change, specifically with these oversized vehicles, and, and then maybe changing something in the code that the solution was to have to show, bless you, to have to show residency at that residence with your name or spouse, however that works. That should be in the code.
Right. Also, there is a position open on the vehicle review board, so if any of you are so inclined, you can fill out an application with Dudley.
Debbie.
Okay. Sorry.
Debbie.
Oh.
Today.
But again, perhaps with some frustration, or if, now, and that's interesting, too, about, because if there has been these discussions about looking at all of that vehicle code stuff, how do we begin to do that?
Do you request that, and we will bring sections of the code at a time? We can't tackle the whole thing at one time, so we can take sections.
I totally understand. And maybe people like you and Dudley can say, what are the, what are the, the most important ones? What are the first kind of ones to grab at, you know, whether it's the little hanging fruit or the ones that seem to be the biggest problem, either one?
I do want to acknowledge the fact that even though our full-size blue stickers have decreased, we are aware of a lot of illegal full-size vehicles, but if they're parking on private property or the homeowners, homeowner associations will not let us on the property, we can't chase them. The sheriffs have been made aware, we give them a list, so if they can, they can cite a moving vehicle, they can cite them for, for not having it after, as they're moving through town, but our code enforcement can only do it if they've parked on our city street. So, we are aware that there are illegal vehicles here.
And there was the discussion about, on that side, before they get on the barge, if there was a way that they, to make sure that they had a permit in their hot little hand before they were allowed on the barge. However, Bombard wasn't willing to, from what I understand, he wasn't willing to do that enforcement, correct? Wasn't that a?
I do, I cannot verify that, Annie, he's ever been approached to do work with us. We talked to him about.
Does that sound familiar to you?
Yeah, yeah, it did. It was actually brought up by Councilmember Sampson.
We talked to him about radiators.
Maybe about two years, two, three years ago, where the, the, his concern was, was different, but the gist of it is to have vehicles vetted before they actually ship them over to ensure with the city that they did have a sticker, that they were going to meet the requirements, and it wasn't, it is my understanding also that Avalon Freight Services did not want to take on the responsibility of doing that job.
Right, and it was mostly about the commercial at the, at that point, because, but maybe it could be extended and reviewed again for residential and.
As well as with the conservancy.
Yeah.
Because they asked for the sticker number, your city permit.
Definitely.
They used to verify it, but now we're electronic, so it's.
Right.
And it's like to point out another problem that you have, not that you don't have enough. There, there's a problem with the handic, people making copies of handicap placards and putting them in their golf cart. Someone who will remain nameless is using his mother's handicap placard, who walks into town three times a week and is, and is using that placard. Somehow, you need to get it out to the people who live in the city. It is a $1,300 ticket to fraudulently use someone else's handicap placard. Just might want to put that on your list.
Okay, thank you. Is this someone going to get up and speak? Lonnie?
Let me finish.
Wait, no, Lonnie's coming up.
No.
She went, she came the long way around.
I'm going to pee.
You go ahead. Okay, let's take, let's, let's take a three-minute break. Let's take a three-minute break, because Bobby, I don't want you to miss anything. Okay, little break?
We're almost done, just so you know.
We're almost done, but Bobby, go ahead.
Yes.
And then Lonnie, you can come up. Well, maybe a four-minute break.
I'm seeing a line in the rain.
Okay.
Denise, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we still on? Oh, yeah. Oh, I guess he did turn this off.
Is he in there?
Okay, we're up, Lonnie. We're live.
Good morning, Lonnie Hurtling, 234 Bird Park. I don't have any complaints. I just was listening and I wanted to touch on something real quick that came to my mind that Councilwoman Cassidy had mentioned briefly about community or civilian oversight or policing, getting everybody involved. It seems like everybody already is involved, so you already have the eyes on it. Just a thought that came to mind is taking pictures. The code enforcement department does have an email. Our cameras on our cellphones have timestamps when we take a picture. So, just a thought is emailing in these pictures of the moment it arrives and then the timeframe later, and then code enforcement doesn't have to be on duty at all, they can go, they can look up that license plate, they can go to that home, and they can send that person the ticket personally. Just a thought, nobody has to be around at all, you just send the ticket. Happens all the time when I get caught on fast track.
So, is, so is that, is that kind of like a citizen's arrest in a way or whatever?
Basically, you're just reporting it, you're just being the cameras, the eyes and ears on the ground and reporting it to, to the department. I mean, there's their proof, they didn't have to be there live to see it.
So, we just have to find out if that's legal?
Yes, we could issue an administrative citation, which is $100.
Wow.
I don't, I know we do it if somebody reports like a dog.
Yep.
Ah.
Same kind of idea.
Pooping and not picking it up, yes.
Great, Lonnie, thank you. Great suggestion.
Thank you.
We've got a lot of brain thrust or trust, whatever it is here today.
I think it's going to come down to you really informing the, the citizens in this, in this town, and I think once they see changes that you're looking about instituting, I think that will take care of a portion of it itself. And I, I, I can't remember who said it, maybe it was Mike, but I think using the sheriffs to issue these citations is an excellent job, but let me just give you one short story. We had someone who had parked in the handicap spot in front of our house, and you all know, I fought for eight months for that for Chuck. And someone, someone was parked in there, and they had taken up half of the space, and there was nowhere to park on the street, and there was nowhere for him to take the cart. And I called the sheriffs. Hour later, nobody came. I called the sheriffs. Half hour later, I called the sheriffs. Now, granted, they could have been out on something, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt on that, but when he came out, he comes, this is literally what he does, he walks up and down, looking at, looking at the carts, and then he stands there like this. And he go, and I see him, I'm sitting on the couch on my laptop, and I walk out and I said, hi, my name's Debbie, I call, I called about the cart. And he said, well, I looked, I was going to park, I was going to push them out of the handicap, but there's nowhere to push them to. And I said, well, I could have pushed them out of handicap, but that's really not the point. The point is they're parking illegally. And he says, well, I don't know what you want me to do about it. And I said, I want you to do your job as law enforcement officer and ticket this cart who is illegally parked in a handicap space. And then I, and, and he goes, well, I really don't want to do that. And I looked at him and I said, God willing, you will never be in that place.
Yes.
Sorry. But there are people that need these, and it is illegal. And I understand that you're not there yet, and hopefully someday you never will be, but it's real. And it was like a lightbulb moment for him. And he said, oh, he goes, I understand what you're saying, my mother's 88 years old, and when I go over to the mainland and I take her to the doctors and I take her to run errands, we can never park in a handicap spot because there's never one open. I should never have had to go into that conversation for him to do his job. So, I'm just saying, I know they don't really would like to work here on the island, and I'm sorry, Captain Hoggins, it's the truth, but they need to do their job. And I think it's a great resource to use them because whoever said it is correct. They really don't have a lot to do here, and we're paying them a lot of money. And when I say we, we, the taxpayers.
Thank you. Okay, now, I know, are we good on comments for a minute until we generate something else? So, Steve, Steve, I know you've been thinking, do you want to share?
Listen, I appreciate you guys coming up today, and I've only been here for a short time, but I know there's a problem. I've written a lot of notes down today, and I feel pretty confident that we will come up with a solution that will work well for everybody.
Except those illegal parkers.
Yeah.
And when you were saying that you've taken some notes, how, at what point do you want to, how would, how do you want to go forward in kind of sharing those thoughts with staff or with?
I'd probably like to spend a week and have a couple of questions and compile a few more things, but to come back very shortly, maybe even at a council meeting or another special meeting, and implement it as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's very doable.
Do we have a good enough chunk to get us started, do you think, folks out there? Okay, that is fantastic. Denise, I don't know if you want to try to recap, like you're always so good at doing, or you might need to, she might need to watch the video and, and get your.
No, I, I would like to hear what Steve's comments were, so I'll get together with him. I would punt out some stuff to council before the next council meeting even, I'm not saying it would be on the agenda, but at least to give a report out so you know where we stand, so as far as a timeline, and just to give you an update at the next council meeting.
And then if we thought maybe you missed something or whatever, we can interject when we have our meetings with you or whatever. Okay. Yeah, we got 10 minutes to spare. But let's, we'll leave it at that. We want to thank you, we all really appreciate you all coming out, and I hope you have a little faith in us and as we continue to work together on this, a few solutions, and if you come up with other ideas, you know how to reach us all. Okay, thank you very much. No, no further comments, meeting adjourned.